Welcome to the 2025 Bridgewater Candidates Forum. We have an exciting year with many individuals coming forward in a number of contested races to represent you, the voters. Election Day is Saturday, April 26th. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Bridgewater Middle School, 166 Mount Prospect Street. I am Joe Gillis, a 30-year resident of Bridgewater. I've served on the Bridgewater Random School Committee, on the Bridgewater Board of Registitors, and several appointments to Bridgewater committees. Through the years, I've also been host or co-host for many BTV shows and forums. Together with my co-host Lauren, we've spent many hours assembling themes and questions for the show. We researched information from Bridgewater, Bridgewater Random Schools, and state websites to assist in verifying numbers for the various questions. Numbers are not presented to debate details, but rather to help provide context for the question topics.
Hi there, I'm Lauren DiFilippo from the Bridgewater Democratic Town Committee. I've lived in Bridgewater for the last seven years. I'm the proud parent of a Mitchell second grader and a soon-to-be Mitchell student in about two years. I have experience working in city government and state government, and now I work in the private sector. And I'm just excited to be here with our fabulous panel tonight. I'll let you do the next note.
Yes, we have a couple of notes before we begin. Late this afternoon, one of the candidates, Allison Marie Conroy, contacted us to let us know that she is ill and unable to attend this evening's taping. And I think we have a second announcement.
Yes, and then late last week, Catherine McDonald-
Welcome to the 2025 Bridgewater Candidates Forum. We have an exciting year with many individuals coming forward in a number of contested races to represent you, the voters. Election Day is Saturday, April 26th. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Bridgewater Middle School, 166 Mount Prospect Street. I am Joe Gillis, a 30-year resident of Bridgewater. I've served on the Bridgewater Rainham School Committee, on the Bridgewater Board of Registars, and several appointments to Bridgewater Committees. Through the years, I've also been host or co-host for many BTV shows and forums. Together with my co-host Lauren, we've spent many hours assembling themes and questions for the show. We researched information from Bridgewater, Bridgewater Rainham Schools, and state websites to assist in verifying numbers for the various questions. Numbers are not presented to debate details, but rather to help provide context for the question topics.
Hi there. I'm Lauren DiFilippo from the Bridgewater Democratic Town Committee. I've lived in Bridgewater for the last seven years. I'm the proud parent of a Mitchell second grader and a soon-to-be Mitchell student in about two years. I have experience working in city government and state government, and now I work in the private sector, and I'm just excited to be here with our fabulous panel tonight. I'll let you do the next note.
Yes, we have a couple of notes before we begin. Late this afternoon, one of the candidates, Allison Marie Conroy, contacted us to let us know that she is ill and unable to attend this evening's taping, and I think we have a second announcement.
Yes, and then late last week, Catherine McDonald, who was a certified candidate for school committee, withdrew her candidacy. So she provided us with a statement, which I will read, but just so voters at home know, since her withdrawal happened after the state deadline, she still will be listed on the ballot when you go to the polls. So Catherine's statement is as follows. "Thank you for allowing me to make a statement. I have decided to step down from running for school committee. While it is bittersweet, I know my voice is better used on the action and advocacy side of things and all that is going on in our school district right now. I hope to see every single one of you out voting on April 26th and look forward to continuing to be a voice for all of the teachers and students in our district. Thank you." So for everyone watching at home, we have not shared the questions we're about to ask with the candidates in advance of this forum. We did share some of the themes with them, for instance, leadership, curriculum, and finance. The format for the show will be, prior to entering the studio, the candidates drew numbers to determine the speaking order. Each candidate will have a one-minute opening statement. The moderators will ask mutually agreed-upon questions. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to respond to each question. Many questions have multiple parts. If moderators have to repeat the questions, the candidate's response time will not be impacted until they begin speaking, time permitting after the main questions. We do have several short-answer questions that we may quickly cycle through with each candidate. Each candidate will then have 30 seconds to wrap up. And that is all I have. So with that, we'll have Dan introduce himself.
All right, Joe. Lauren, thank you so much for having me and for hosting this forum. My name's Dan Guthro. I am a Rainham resident, running for the Rainham seat for school committee. In my day job, I work in the private sector for a software company as part of the leadership team for a large communications department. But really, my community involvement, I moved to the Rainham community 10 years ago this month with my wife and our oldest son. We now have two boys. They are in third grade at Lord Liberty and sixth grade at RMS, and I've seen firsthand the impact that great teachers have on students. You know, my community involvement began almost immediately upon moving to the Rainham community when my oldest son started playing soccer. I started as a coach, and over the years, very quickly was asked to join the Board of Directors, held various roles, and now the Vice President of Rainham U Soccer. Through that involvement, I've gotten to meet a number, a number of families, and you know, one thing that I can't help but be struck by is the universal agreement that, you know, our students deserve more than what they are being offered. Not from the teachers, the teachers are doing everything that they can, not from the superintendent or the administration, I think they're doing everything they can, but there are larger systemic problems that are taking place within our communities, which I think need to be addressed. So I'm really excited by the opportunity to serve on the school committee. It's going to be quite a challenge over the next couple of years, but I think if you, anybody that knows me knows I have a track record of getting difficult jobs done and not being afraid to ask the hard questions or do the hard things or put the time in to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our kids.
Andy?
Hi, Bridgewater. I'm Andy Hoy Thomas, current candidate for school committee. I'm a graduate of Bridgewater State and Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School. The innate instinct I have to be a positive presence in our community was cultivated in the school system that I was a part of. My passion for community fuels my interests in policy and civic engagement. While managing projects professionally, my heart remains committed to community service. I have supported our armed forces by volunteering with the USO and supported our youth by volunteering with the Y and Big Brother, Big Sister. More recently, my husband and I have extended our family through foster care and adoption. We knew Bridgewater would be the right place to raise our growing family, and that it is never too early to get involved. It is my goal to be given the opportunity to join Mr. Guthro from Rainham on the committee this year, and I hope we are able to engage in meaningful dialogue and answer some of the questions that the voters watching this forum have. More updates, if you would like to, follow my Facebook page, Andy Hoy Thomas for BR School Committee, and I can be reached via email at andyhoythomas@gmail.com.
Thank you. Before we continue to the questions, maybe just to clarify a little bit, that the two candidates you see are both running for the regional school committee, but they're technically not competing against each other. Dan is here seeking the one open seat for a three-year term in Rainham. Andy is one of the two individuals actively seeking the one seat, you know, the individual seat on the Bridgewater side, where it would be Andy or the name that I ran a little bit earlier, Allison, who was ill. So you could theoretically vote for both of them, you could vote for Dan and Allison or, you know, any combination. So they're not technically competing against each other, but they are both here to represent the community or their communities jointly under the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School Agreement, and they're elected based on total votes for both communities. You know, they'll add up the votes and determine who will be the representative winner. So just to clarify that, they are not competing directly against each other, but are both looking to represent the communities or our community towards the school district. So, thank you.
Awesome. With that, we'll launch into our questions. Andy, you get the first one. Our most recent district student success plan focuses on bolstering literacy instruction for students in grades K through 3. What other priority areas do you think would set our students up for success at future grade levels? Assessments are the primary way of tracking student success year over year. How familiar are you with our results, and what do they mean for student performance and success after graduation? So I was overlooking the BR district report card as well as the student success plan, and there are a few operational initiatives that are drawn out in there, and I think maintaining and updating digital infrastructure is huge. I hear that discussed a lot as a budget item that could be cut, and in today's day and age, I just don't see that as possible, especially as you progress into the high school. There's so much, all of these are important, but the one that really sticks out to me is the continuous cuts, and those keep affecting our MCAS results, and that $1 million cut from last year's budget of resources is really going to show an impact on when people go to look at our school systems report holistically. So I think a couple of those really, you need to get in early, but the maintaining those through each grade level is going to get us the results in the high school.
Same question to you, Dan, if you need me to repeat it, I'm happy to do that.
No, absolutely. I think Andy's absolutely right, and, you know, I've looked at the student success plan. I think it's a really noble success plan. I think what the administration does and what Superintendent Powers has set as the North Star for our school is spot on what we need. I'm a little worried going tonight, I'm going to sound like a broken record. The student success plan is fine, but it doesn't mean anything if we don't have the budget to bring it alive. Period, full stop. We can have a level-set budget every single year, and that student success plan will never become a reality. We can have goals for our children, and we can set benchmarks for MCAS and other standardized testing. They are never going to improve when there's 28 or 30 elementary school students in a classroom. Period, full stop.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with you, Dan. Some in the community are concerned about student-teacher ratios in the schools, with additional comments regarding new growth, houses and apartments overwhelming the schools. However, 2023-24 had official BR enrollment of 5582, while 20 years ago, student enrollment was 6,061. What do you think about student enrollment, building capacities, and class sizes?
Yeah, this is something that I've been really outspoken about. You know, I think there's a couple of pieces to it, and as I've gotten involved in this race, and as I've gotten involved in looking more closely at what's going on around development in our towns, I've learned a lot about how development is taking place, why it's taking place, why there's things we can and can't control, but, you know, at the end of the day, right, there's a very simple formula, right, which is that if we build a certain number of houses or apartments, it's going to attract a certain number of people. And we should have growth, we should have development, right? We should have ways to kind of grow and expand our community. I'd like Rainham to be the rural community, even that I moved to 10 years ago. My neighborhood is dramatically different, and that's okay. But what we need to keep in mind is when we attract more people to our community, right, there's a cost associated with that. There's a cost for services, there's a cost for police, there's a cost for fire, there's a cost on our infrastructure in Bridgewater, there's a cost on the water, right? That's going on, and we have to make sure that if we're going to continue to build residentially, that we have a fully balanced tax base, which this goes far beyond what's going on in the school committee. We can't control that, right? We need to look to our peers in town government, whether it's the respected Bridgewater Town Council, the Rainham Select Board, whether it's the finance committees, the planning boards for the towns. I'm not an expert. I'm a dad who was asked to run for school committee because no one else in Rainham wanted to put their name forward. But looking and taking a glance at where we stand with the way our tax bases are built in towns, I don't think anyone wants more development, I don't think anyone wants more taxes, but it seems like our tax base is a little bit out of whack, and it's skewing very heavily residential. And as we know, it's $16,000 and change to educate a student over the course of a year, right? We can't just continually ask people to continue to pay more, right? We need to find interesting and creative ways for commercial, for industrial, for other, to expand and kind of diversify our broader tax base to offset some of those education costs.
Thank you. And same question for Andy?
Yeah, thanks, Dan. I want to build off of what he said and kind of look at it from a different way. So I've had a lot of discussions with people about Prop 2.5, and that's the tax levy, and that's the largest revenue that's coming into our town, in Rainham as well. The 2.5% increase isn't enough to keep up with the inflation that our school system requires to run, not only in compliance, but with excellence, which is what we're striving for. We need to look for alternative funding through the state and federal government, that is an uphill battle at this current moment in time, and I lost my train of thought there, but we will be seeking through developments, as Dan said, commercial development, and we need to think about it smartly. I have the pleasure of living in a six-house subdivision, and we have 11 kids in that one, six houses. There's been a couple opportunities recently where projects have been put forward in town, where the number of apartments scare people. One in particular, the Friendly's Development, they're talking about 53 apartments. Those apartments are one-bedroom apartments, attracting professionals. I think the plan put forward projected maybe four students. That is going to drive commercial business on the bottom that will fuel to our revenue, which is what the school committee is then going to receive as the budget. So we need to be seizing those opportunities when they're put in front of us for good commercial tax revenue and low impact to the school system.
We'll start with Andy for this question. From smart boards to laptops, the role of technology has changed the landscape of education. What do you believe is the correct balance or role of technology in education? And are there skills or classes you believe should be added to the curriculum and/or classes that should be minimized or eliminated?
Okay, so as far as technology in the classroom, that's supervised by the students? I mean, supervised by the teachers?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, they should have Chromebooks, they need them. They've been on that path for now, for so long, that if you took it away, that's a disadvantage. We're competing with districts that, that's the minimum. So that needs to stay. Where we are failing our students is the digital literacy. Those rates on our school systems report cards were way low. We don't offer that. We don't offer the arts, digital literacy, and computer science classes that we used to, so that's something where we really need to get back in and be competitive with.
Dan, same question to you.
There's nothing more important in 2025 than digital literacy and preparing students for jobs in, whether they are in the technology field or associated with the technology field. That's not to say that other types of jobs aren't important, but if we were to pull back, and I've heard this before in conversations with people, residents in town and community folks, that we should pull back the amount of time they spend on screens in schools. It's the opposite. There's so many opportunities, not for technology to teach our children, but it's such a powerful tool for our teachers to use, that we need to continue to embrace it, we need to make sure it's properly funded, and, you know, we don't need to replace reading, writing, arithmetic, we need to continue to teach cursive handwriting, right? But we also need to make sure that we have technology literacy courses. Kids should be exposed to programming, they should be exposed to AI, they should be exposed and have these opportunities to learn about the big world, which they're going to have to go live, because when you go and understand the things that you're using every day, like how YouTube works or how TikTok algorithms feed you content and put you into a content loop that you think is discovered but is actually highly artificial, suddenly we're raising really smart and savvy consumers of technology. That's going to be the key to make sure they're not just prepared to go work right in. Other industries, right, is going to allow them and prepare them for their everyday lives, to understand how these things work.
Next, this is going to Dan. It's a little bit long, but, you know, I can repeat parts of it if we need to.
All right, you got it, Joe.
Okay. Over the past few years, it has been discussed that teacher contracts have had 2.5, 2.5, and 0 as the annual increases. However, beginning with the 2021-22 school year and continuing the next three cycles through 24-25, teacher salaries have in fact escalated much more dramatically. Teacher contracts have built-in step raises, where each year brings an automatic raise through the first 15 years, then at years 20 and 21, plus longevity increases, taking a few random starting points and staying within the same degree structure. Over the last three years, I looked at three different teachers, and they got raises of 27%, 17%, 14%. Even the 0 had raises between 3 and 7. As mentioned earlier, Prop 2.5, it controls the increase in local tax revenue. Three years of 2.5 is 7.69%. Therefore, how can salary increases of 14% to 27% be sustainable when the increase in revenue is less than 8%?
I think I got all that, Joe. So if I go off track in my two minutes, hold up the card, let me know. Look, at the end of the day, I've heard similar numbers, I've heard things about taking 0 raises, I've heard other folks getting large raises, I've heard that we've given out administrators sizable raises. I'm on the outside looking in, I don't know what the numbers are, but I can tell you one thing, which is, good teachers shouldn't be cheap. We have to figure out a way, and we have to build a system in our towns that allows us to pay teachers, and the good teachers especially, what they deserve. It's easy to say that they should take a 0 raise or a 2.5% raise. One of the things I think that is missing from a lot of discussions that I have with people is, is okay, we have line of sight into what BR pays. What does Oliver Ames pay? What does Middleborough pay? What does Stoughton pay? What does Quincy pay? What do our other pair communities pay? I don't know. I would be curious for someone to run the numbers, and I'm trying to figure this out myself online, but it's really hard. My assumption would be that we probably don't benchmark well against towns that maybe are, have a higher cost or investment per pupil, but I would be very curious to understand, and one of the things I hope to figure out is, how do we stack up, if it's something that we can discover, against other communities in our area, right? Because those are the schools that we're going to lose teachers to, potentially, if we can't pay them what they deserve. And is it above or is it below? Or is it the same? Because I think that's the starting point for the conversation. It's easy to say that they shouldn't get a raise. It's easy to say I don't want an override, so teachers shouldn't get a raise. The fact of the matter is, is we're going to get ourselves into a cycle where we need to make sure that our good teachers are taken care of, just like in the private sector, our best employees should be taken care of, right? And that's to be done reasonably, right? It's taxpayer dollars, but we can't just assume that, you know, because they're teachers, right, these numbers, we just have to understand them and how we benchmark to our pair communities.
Thanks. Do you need me to repeat that, Andy?
No, I think I'll join off of what Dan said here. So personally, my feelings on it are that the teachers in Bridgewater and Rainham, we have a lot to thank them for. I don't think we've financially contributed enough to get the gains that we have from them currently. We've lost teachers years after year that haven't been replaced, and they somehow produce happy graduates year after year, so I wanted to thank them for that, and I wanted to build off of your point. We really need to look, I've never negotiated a contract, a union contract, I would love to be involved, and when it happens the next time, I know currently they're on a one-year that ends in the end of August. They added a couple sections into this current one-year one, and I'd like to see what's coming forward. I think we have one of the highest rates in Massachusetts of teachers with masters, licensures, all those things need to be compensated for. We're not going to keep high-quality teachers if we can't keep them funded and if we can't promise funding for the next year. There's already going to be cuts to the school system going into a possible override, so we need to think about that, they need to be valued in the conversation.
This next one's for Andy first. The latest BR school budget proposal adds 37 education positions across all school grades. To accomplish this would require an additional $12.2 million from the two-member communities. Do you support this proposal or a different approach? And if you are in favor of increased funding, how would you advocate to the Bridgewater Town Council and Rainham Board of Selectmen to place an override question on ballots and then convince town voters to approve the proposal?
So I have been involved a little bit in this, I've attended the financial subcommittee meetings, and I was in attendance of the joint ad hoc between Rainham and Bridgewater, both towns coming together to discuss where they wanted to go with this. Both towns coming together to discuss where they wanted to go with this. I am in support of the 106 budget put forth during Rachel King's presentation at the budget presentation meeting. They took into consideration what the superintendent's calling for, the 109 million, and he wanted 88 teachers and staff added. The budget that they're putting forward is asking for 37. So there's a concession made on that side, and it hurts to say it because the teachers and students deserve the 88 staff that they need. On the other side of it, the level services budget, we still needed an override. Our towns cannot fund what we need to keep our schools afloat. So I think a concession was made on that side where we aren't just going to keep our schools afloat. We're going to ask for something. We need to advocate for our students, for our teachers. Their days need to get better. So I think it was smart of them to put forth a middle-of-the-road. I have seen a lot of parents, Rainham and Bridgewater, in the parent advocacy group working hard. They're out there ringing doorbells and making phone calls. So I'd love to see the community support the education. I know that it's a hard thing for some in our community that have tighter wallets and I feel like we need to work with them. And if they're seniors, we need to find programs where maybe they can work off taxes. There's things we can do and I think we need to put all the ideas out there because some of them are going to be bad, some of them are going to be good. But the more people we have involved in that fight, the more ideas we're going to have and chances to move forward. So I would be voting in support. I am going to be here for the next at least 12 years of our family's school life. So yes, I would be in support of that.
Same question to you, Dan.
This is probably the one I'm going to go a little long on. I'm going to try not to. So I think there's a couple of layers to this. Like Andy, I think of people like my mother-in-law, who's on a fixed income, right? And the idea of an override, right, is going to affect a lot of residents in ways that, you know, where they have a fixed income. They might be one paycheck away from, you know, having to file for bankruptcy, which sounds extreme, but that's the fact of the matter of living in 2025 in communities like ours, where everybody's not in a financially secure household. You know, in the next breath, I would tell every single homeowner in Rainham, property values are a little bit crazy right now all over the place, but if we want to fall behind our neighboring communities, let's have a school district nobody wants to go learn in. Right? So if we do not take care of our school district, all of our property values will be adversely impacted, period. So we need to take care of the school district because that's what every homeowner, whether they have a student or not, every property owner, whether they have a student or not, should be interested in. You know, I think this notion that we're going to add 37, you know, new positions, you know, I would encourage everybody to keep their eye on the ball. It doesn't add 37 new positions. It replaces the 20-something that we eliminated last year and adds just a couple of new positions above that. So while it might seem like a luxury or it might seem like an unnecessary expense or a burden, depending on your point of view, they're all valid. The fact of the matter is, we have a growing school, we have a growing community in BR and in our district, and we need to do the right things. We need to make sure that our schools are properly staffed because that's the right thing for the kids, it's the right thing for the community. And going a step further, we need to keep the conversation going. We need to figure out this override ASAP and then we immediately need to start thinking about next school year because we also need to add jobs. We need to figure out, how do we get to that 88 jobs superintendent power has asked for? And then we need to figure out, how do we continue to keep up with the growth that's going to happen in our student population through a lot of this development that's taking place?
Thank you. Next one, we'll start with you, Dan.
Sure.
Okay. Many communities annually opt in for school choice, allowing students from other communities to be educated at Bridgewater-Rainham. For 25-26 school year, Bridgewater-Rainham voted to allow up to 15 slots in grade nine only. Do you view this as a positive or negative for the school system?
Yeah, it's a great question. I, you know, I'm learning a lot about school choice. My kids are younger, so it's not even something that I was aware of until the last couple of years. I think school choice is a positive. And I think what we need to have is, we need to have a school district where there's competition for people to want to come to BR from surrounding communities. I have friends, a lot of neighbors, right? Their children go to West Bridgewater, their children go out of district. Everybody wants to go to Bristol-Plymouth. And I sit here and I look at BR and we walk around, the high school in particular, it's a beautiful building, right? We have so many great educators in our high school and in our other schools. I just go, gosh, why can't we have a district where the competition is to come here? Why can't we, right? The conversation right now is, you know, why, should there be a lottery to get into Bristol-Plymouth, right? Well, everyone's going to Bristol-Plymouth. Everyone wants to go to Bristol-Plymouth. Why don't they want to go to BR? We have to fix that. And it didn't happen overnight that people, I don't want to say didn't want to go to BR, because I think there's a lot of people that want to go to BR and there's a lot of people that love BR. I'm a 10-year resident of the community. I've come to love the BR community, going to high school soccer games and high school football games and marketing and things with my children. We have to create a district where people should want to come here. And then from there, that school choice really isn't going to be a big deal because it's actually going to be a net positive for our community. But it starts with having a district where, right, we're not just focused on 15 spots and can we absorb 15 students. It should be, do we have a gemstone school district in our region that people want to come join? And that's going to take us a few years at least to get back to.
Thank you.
Sure. I kind of have a different thought on it. I'm not sure where the 15 students came from. I'd have to look into that. I don't think we should be doing school choice, allowing students from other towns to come to our high school when we can't have the appropriate funding that we need in place for the kids we have now. I do think it's important to offer BP as an option, but as you said, that's getting really competitive and it's getting harder and harder to get in. So I think it's, we're kind of at a place where if we are accepting kids from other towns, do we know if, and I understand they changed it to ninth grade only, but I know we had school choice at a time where we were getting kids that were expelled from other systems, causing problems, draining more resources. So at this point, I would not be for school choice, participating in it. But obviously, the town has spoken and said they will continue it with the ninth grade for those 15 students. So I'd have to look more into it and see how that goes.
This next question, we'll start with Andy. The work of a school committee member is varied. You handle everything from contracts to bus schedules and curriculum. With this in mind, please explain your approach to handling controversial or complicated issues. Additionally, residents from across the communities have asked for better communication and greater transparency from our elected leaders. How would you effectively communicate with your community members and stakeholders?
Sure. So as a newbie on school committee, I'm not sure how much say you get in what subcommittees you're a part of. There are a few I've written down that really pique my interest, but I would be at the mercy of the current members. So I do forget the second part of your question.
So how would you handle controversial or complicated issues? And then how would you communicate about the work of the school committee and the district to the stakeholders?
Yeah, so my idea or thought would be a communication page, whether that be on the town website or just a dedicated nominated person or volunteer on the school committee that wants to, in layman's terms, recap the meetings, post the blurbs, be doing that. I've seen really good recaps come out of the parents' advocacy group. And I think that it could be incorporated to maybe a community outreach subcommittee on school committee.
Same question for you, Dan.
Yeah, I think Andy's idea of a community outreach subcommittee or liaison, there's a lot of different liaisons that school committees are, right, attached to different parts of the towns or programs and things like that. I think one of the things, one of the things that surprised me as a resident is, you know, thinking I understood what was going on the last couple of years and then realizing I don't really understand what's going on. And over the last couple of months, as I've become more and more involved, you know, the level of disconnect, right? And it's nobody's fault. It's not the existing school committee or administration's fault. This stuff's really hard. It's really complicated, right? And at the end of the day, right, they're elected officials, but you know, it's a different type of elected official than other positions in town. And that's not to make excuses, but it's to say that we do need to look at ways to help communicate, understand, and let people know what we're doing, why we're doing it. You know, there's a lot of departments in town. I've had a lot of good conversations with different folks over the last couple of weeks in particular, you know, and, you know, we talked a lot about development, you know, and I certainly had one understanding of development and how development was occurring and I had a couple of conversations and I go, gosh, I was wildly off-base, right? And I'm not embarrassed to admit that. I was wrong and I've learned and it's great because I feel more informed now and more empowered to be able to make a difference and have an impact. You know, so I think there is more work that we have to do and especially if we're going to go to our communities and ask for more money, right? We have to make sure that people understand where is it going, how is it being responsibly spent? And the key part of this is, what are we going to do as a Bridgewater-Rainham community, but are two separate towns that operate separately and act separately? What are we going to do to make sure that, you know, maybe next year we might be in the same situation, but in year two, in year three, in year four, that we have not gotten into this override cycle because we've made changes in how our towns operate, how our tax bases operate, and we've built something that's sustainable for the district and for the taxpayers?
This one's going to you, Dan. MCAS is no longer part of the requirements for graduation. What do you believe is an appropriate measure for graduation? What structure should we have in place so our graduates are active and engaged members of the community? And should our emphasis always be on graduates attending four-year colleges?
To start with the last part of your question, should our focus be on preparing kids for four-year colleges all the time? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I have a brother that works in the trades. I know many people that work in the trades. You know, I think there's a lot of careers out there and I think this fallacy that, right, you need to go graduate high school, go to a college, take on a lot of debt, I think as we're seeing over the last couple of years, right, that's a cycle that needs to get broken. Everyone that wants to go to college should have the opportunity to go to a college. I think that is true. But we shouldn't necessarily be spending all of our time preparing people because I think there's a lot of different opportunities that are out there. With regards to how do we measure success? You know, gosh, this is going to sound so kind of old-school, but can they read? Can they write? Can they do basic things? We look at our scorecards and our district scorecards and I don't have all the data in front of me, but you know, sometimes I go, gosh, like, is not 100% literacy? You know, like they're coming to school and they're spending time in school and we should be raising kids that have, right, the basic skills to go and be successful in life, right? And this is where great teachers come into it. And this is where it's not possible for us to take care of our students and to make sure that they're properly prepared when we have first and second and third graders who are going into classrooms that have 25, 26, 27 or more students in it, right? When there's one teacher most of the time, maybe they have another teacher or paraprofessional or eight or whatnot come in from time to time. But you know, it creates this cycle where, starting in the lowest grades, they're not able to get the support and the development and the learning that they need. And then it just compounds as they get older and they get older and now we're just moving them through a system. So I didn't even get to talk about MCAS. I'm glad MCAS is gone. It's taking place this week. I look forward to a day when we don't actually have to even take that test. There has to be a better way and a different way. I don't know what it is, but I see firsthand on my children and their friends, the pressure that they put themselves under, not because they're worried about themselves, but because they don't want to impact their teachers who they care so much about. And they know and they understand, even in elementary school, this is a reflection of my teacher. That shouldn't be the case.
Would you mind repeating that?
Yeah. MCAS is no longer part of the requirements for graduation. What do you believe is an appropriate measure for graduation? What structure should we have in place so that our graduates are active and engaged members of the community? And should our emphasis always be on graduates attending four-year college?
I echo a lot of what Dan said about trade schools, vocation, the military. My personal experience, I did go to college. My husband was in the military, has a great job in satellite communications. So there's not only one path that's right. We definitely need to diversify. It's important in the middle school to even explain these options. Had I known about any of the options I know about now, I would not have made the same decisions that I made. So it's hard to make those connections with a 12-year-old. I personally haven't tried, but I will. And then I also think preparing them just in general, like, we have to talk with them in reality. We aren't giving financial literacy much thought into our school. And I don't know if that would be curriculum derived or not, but there's just basic skills that have been lost, whether they were electives or not, and we really need to bring them back on that. As far as MCAS, I know it has been said that it will be no more, but the state or all the districts independently chose to use it as the marker for this year. I look forward to seeing the ideas put forward on what they plan to use after that. And I would weigh them thoughtfully and probably look at a more holistic, is this student going to succeed where the student is and with what the student has as abilities? Everyone's not the same, so I don't think a standardized test is going to shape that.
Thank you. This one will go to Andy first. With a mix of students from many socioeconomic backgrounds, do you believe BR does an effective job at providing for the educational needs of all learners?
That's a tough one. So within, I want to say what the data I was looking at, we have 40% high-need students in our district currently. I think, I looked at 2008 as a point of reference just because that was the year I attended. I think we were 23% then. So year after year, the teachers are being asked to learn and adapt to what students are put in front of them. I do, I would love to talk more with the teachers about what they think we could be doing to support that, whether it's policy or just more community involvement. I do think that the diversity in the system is great and we really do need to support that and go along with the superintendent's student success plan, his four pillars. They all have great goals attached to them. So I think the more awareness we have of what we're trying to achieve for the community, they can really add to that, too.
Same question to you, Dan.
I don't know how we can be meeting their needs and it's nobody's fault. It's not the fault of the teachers, it's not the fault of the schools. And again, I know I probably sound a little bit like a broken record, but when you have 24, 25, 28 kids in a classroom, right? And you know, I think, you know, inclusion classrooms are a huge positive. My kids have been in inclusion classrooms, you know, over the years and they're huge positives. But when this class size gets so large and you have, at times, right, one teacher or even two teachers, it can be very challenging to make sure that everybody and all students are getting the attention that they deserve. And, you know, I recall reading an anecdote on Facebook from a teacher, you know, talking about exactly that and talking about how when you have, you know, that many students in a classroom and one student starts to create a little bit of distraction, right, how quickly the learning environment breaks down. So I think everyone's doing the best they can. You know, I don't think anyone's saying anyone's doing a bad job. I just don't think they're resourced properly to be able to have the effectiveness and the impact that they can have.
This one will be going to you, Dan. Sort of continuing on that same theme we were just talking about, but do you believe that Bridgewater-Rainham does an appropriate job in providing for educational opportunities and challenges for our more advanced students?
I will give the same answer that I just gave because I think it holds true for everybody. We have such a diverse community and, you know, I've met my friends, I just think about my children and their friends and people from all walks of life and how much they all enjoy being together. It's so incredible, you know? But unfortunately, the reality is, is we have to try with the resourcing that we have to create an experience that forces everyone to meet in the middle. And I think that's unfair to the students who need a little bit more support, whether it's learning, whether it's emotional, whether it's something else. And I don't think it's fair to the students who are high achievers, right? Who maybe need to slow down a little bit or who are asked to be a classroom mentor, right? Because they pick up the subject matter more easily. It doesn't help anybody get to the ultimate goal, which is how can we prepare these young people to be members of our community when they're adults with critical thinking and other skills that, you know, will prepare them for, you know, the future, whether they go on to college, whether they go into a trades or something else. So I just think it comes down to, we're not really resourced to meet the needs of everybody. That's a big statement, but it's the fact of the matter.
Thanks. Same question to you.
Yeah, to build off of what Dan was saying, how can we be meeting the needs of the students that are advanced in different ways? I know they've phased out the terminology of advanced and honors and I can't remember at this time what they call them now, but one of the things that they've been able to hold on to is the AP classes at the high school, which are a lot of ways that kids who might not have the finances to get into college, get a foot in the door. And it really opens up their possibilities for them. So that is something I would think that we would hope to cling to. So that is something I would think that we would hope to cling to. As far as more opportunities in the lower schools, it's going to cost money. We're going to get what we pay for and right now, we don't financially contribute enough to add the classes that we need to offer them. So no. And I would love to work towards providing them with more options.
Thanks. Now, we've gotten through the bulk of everything, that's with the 10 big questions. We have a few just short answer questions. They might be yes, no, or maybe, you know, 10 or 15 seconds if you feel you need to say something here. But we tried to make these fairly simple and I'm going to start off with Andy. Early release days for teacher professional development, oh, excuse me, early release days for professional teacher development, they often occur on school days. Is that good, bad? Do you like it? You know, it requires, it turns into half-days for the students.
Yes. So I do have a couple of family members that are teachers in the district and I sometimes will watch their kids on a half-day because they're at home sooner than the teachers are. So I understand it's complicated. I know neighborhood schedule, like group mom is going to have this whole neighborhood's worth of kids, but what if you're in one of the communities or streets that doesn't have a group of trusted childcare to watch that? So I think the day is mostly Wednesday that they currently do it. I think it could be looked at, maybe if Monday or Friday is easier, but I'm not sure exactly why Wednesday was chosen to be that day.
Same sort of quick question to you, Dan, about, you know, how half-days, you know...
I forget about them sometimes, so that's, that's not, that's not great. Yes, you look at, we, professional development is important for teachers. And I'll tell you what, half-days like snow days are a rite of passage for kids. There's nothing that gets them more pumped to have a half-day in the middle of the week. So as a parent, it's an inconvenience sometimes. I trust that the school is making the most of it, even, you know, whether it's for development or wellness or mental health and stress relief, which I know they've done recently. They're fine. They're a pain, but they're fine. They're a rite of passage for kids.
Okay. We're going to transition a little bit. This will go to you, Dan, first. With school start times, should the high school start time and the elementary school start time for the day be switched?
15 seconds to answer that one? Yeah, look, in a perfect world, absolutely. If we were within a perfect world, we'd have 88 new teachers coming to our district next year, though, so.
No, I don't believe so. And that's the old argument that you don't want the younger kids home before the older kids in the afternoon. I know there are districts that have tried it, but it seems to be working in BR, so I don't think we should switch it.
Okay. Another quick question, starting with you, Andy. Should classroom education begin before Labor Day?
I think I went to school before Labor Day and after. I don't think it had that much of an effect unless you're going into the heat of June and with a couple of snow days. So I think the week before Labor Day is fine.
Dan?
I, I think, I think the way BR does it is fine. I think, you know, we, speaking anecdotally, we went back after Labor Day and Taunton went back before Labor Day and we still got out before Taunton, going by my, my son's cousin. So I think it's fine. I like Labor Day, too. Last gasp of summer.
We'll start with Dan for this one. Are field trips complimentary to classroom instruction or are they too great in insurance liability?
Field trips are vital. Period. Full stop. There should be more of them.
Yeah, I think it's hard to get the buy-in for it and there needs to be more of them. I know those are some of the standout days that you remember when you move on to the next grade and that's your teacher for life that you had a bond with on the field trip. So yeah, they are vital.
Now, we're moving into closing statements. We started with Dan as the first opening, so I think Andy, you would be your first for the closing?
Sure. I didn't put this one in the teleprompter, so I'm just going to read a few things that I have here. I really hope to get on the committee this year. I'd love to work for the town and on doing such with the situation we're facing, I'd advocate for transparency with the calculations necessary for our taxpayers to understand the personal financial impact in the case of an override. I would want to support smart development in our town to increase our town's revenue and get us that base budget to where we need to be. I would encourage the administration to seek and secure sustainable funding through state and federal avenues. And lastly, I would ensure that all voices are heard and valued. And I would take that into consideration when casting any vote on school committee. Again, if you're interested, you can follow my Facebook page, Andy Hoy Thomas for BR School Committee, or you can email me at andyhoythomas@gmail.com.
Dan?
Excellent. Yeah, echoing, echoing what Andy said, you know, gosh, we, there's a big job ahead of the school committee, whoever ends up on the school committee over the next couple of years, whether it's this one particularly, these two seats are for three years, but there's an election next year and there's an election the year after. It's every year. And we have to think about how do we, as a committee, take a proactive role in our community and in our government with our two towns to understand that the school is the single largest line item tax expense for both communities. It can't be a passive exercise where we find ourselves into February and March and April where we need to scramble to come up with a plan. We need to get together as towns together. We need to get together with finance committees and planning committees and town councils and select boards. And we need to get together with the school committee and map out what is our success plan as mutual communities to make sure that we are doing right by the communities, we're doing right by our children, we're doing right by everybody's tax dollars. That might require outside input in the form of having somebody come in and say, hey, this is where you could be doing better with your, your tax base, et cetera. So, you know, my focus is going to be on that. We need to solve this, we need to solve this short-term crisis and then we need to build a sustainable future for our schools so that we don't get into this year after year after year.
Well, thank you both for joining us tonight. We really appreciate it. Thank you to Joe for being my co-host and for BTV for having us in the studio and the crew. Thank you. Back-to-back nights. Just a quick reminder to voters in Bridgewater. Absentee ballots for the annual town election are now available in the town clerk's office. Registered voters may vote by absentee ballot if they are unable to vote at the polls on election day because of the following reason: absence from town during the hours that polls are open, physical disability, and observing religious beliefs. If you have any questions about how to get an absentee ballot, please contact the clerk's office. Thank you so much.
And with that, thank you all.
Thank you.